Good evening. Good evening, welcome to the June 11th, 2018 Board of Education meeting. Could we have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Here, thank you. Our first item on the agenda is written communication. Do we have any written communication, Dr. Beavis?
We have no written communication at this time.
All right, then we're moving right along to our fan report. Looking forward to this.
He is coming up. A familiar face to all of Evanston.
Is this supposed to be written?
No, no, just write.
Do I turn this on?
Yeah, if you push it, a red light.
There you go.
Dr. Campbell abandoned me.
There you are.
There we go.
My resolution for this meeting was to refer to Dr. Campbell as Dr. Campbell. That's a change. Hi, everyone, thanks so much. You don't need those as full screen, right? Can you do this now? Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. It's in the upper, the upper right-hand corner. It's the upper right-hand corner. Yep, that's it. Thank you.
Just do full screen. Just do that, Kathy.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, so we're gonna do the zip through.
Wow.
Yeah, there's an asterisk by the 2017-18 attendance because we still have, strangely, one more program, which will be here in your own home on June 20th with Zachary Wood. So we don't have, I know how many events, but I don't know final attendee count. It does actually, I think, maybe have built into it a low estimate of maybe 300 people. We've never done a program this late in the season, so I actually haven't, I'm sort of assuming not everyone has their second home on the Cape. That was a joke.
I got it.
Thank you. It also does not include, in terms of that 7,000 number, does not include the students who were, had the great joy and pleasure of listening to a couple different fan speakers this year, nor does it include Kathy Williams. You'll hear, you'll see this in a second, Kathy Williams, who spoke to ETHS math faculty, so those numbers are not rolled in. This is just the general public fan events, those numbers right there. Evanston recap, and we are gonna zoom through this. This is in, if you go from left to right, row to row, this is in chronological order from the very first program we ever did here with Ishmael Bia. They did not put the years on these things. You all know how to probably read those names, so I won't belabor additional names. Cian Bylock, although was not a public presentation, she's also now, you know, she's president of Barnard now, she did do a, some private stuff with ETHS for faculty regarding math curriculum. I think you guys are doing like a research study with her, if I'm not mistaken. And David Jaeger, same thing, he was not a public presentation at ETHS, though he did then ultimately do some stuff TBD, I'm sure. Dr. Campbell and Dr. Beavis can, or Mr. Dr. Beavis, Dr. Beavis can fill you in on that if you're curious. Jaime Cassap was one of seven panelists on a education panel, but I didn't want to start putting all the faces, so I just threw him up there. Next slide. Continuing, as you see here as well, you'll notice on the next slide, which we'll get to, or, hold on, pause one second, actually, on the previous slide, you see Bryan Stevenson twice, both the last slide and this slide, it's because he came twice to ETHS, so I put him up twice. One quick little note, Congressman Lewis and Andrew Eiden have the first book of their next trilogy is gonna be published this fall. The trilogy is called Run, March Then Run, about the, his career running for public office, just as a PS, FYI. Next slide. Continuing onward, I'm sure some of you people remember all of these folks, there's been so many, as you can see. Janet Mock was a private event for the LGBTQ+ summit that you did two years ago. Sean Reardon, in addition to his public event here at ETHS, also did the, a private event at YOU's main room that included many of the people from cradle to career, as you probably Some folks were also interviewed by other folks, and that actually began with Jasmine Ward, who was our first speaker this past year, interviewed by Natalie Moore and Gary Wills from Northwestern, interviewed by Chaplain Tehera Ahmad from Northwestern. Next slide. Our guy, Tana Hossi-Cotes, mm, that one's so nice, that was our largest fan event in our history. Ah, I take that back, sorry, take that back, almost bigger than the event that was at Walsh Ryan Arena with, with Temple Grandin, but a very close second, and as you know, was interviewed by your very own Dr. Campbell. That was also excellently interviewed by Dr. Campbell. That event also had our first book giveaway at an event where Fan absorbed the cost of books. We gave away 800 copies of his book to the first, as supplies lasted, I guess, is what I'll say. And then the other piece that I'll note parenthetically about that, it was in your board packet, was that there was also, I'm sure all of you know this, there was a Q and A, one, the first question of the Q and A segment that you all had the nice video of that was then given to Tana Hossi-Cotes, who then tweeted it, and it then went crazy international viral with about 10 million views. So fabulous. It was just a wonderful evening all around, great night for Evanston and for Fan. Nancy Kane, although she did not do, from Harvard Business School, though she, a historian, though she did not do a public event here, she did speak to the civics classes, sophomore civics classes, I'll talk about that in a second, and that was also, she arranged on her own, without my prompting, she arranged for 300 copies of her book to be given to ETHS sophomore civic students, as well as the history department here at ETHS. Tara Betts, excuse me, Julie Lithcott-Hames is interviewed by poet Tara Betts from Hyde Park. Next round there, Kathy Williams came with Joe Bowler when they came and did a couple days about math, did a thing at Northwestern, Kathy Williams came and spoke with the math faculty here. Meg Jay, then Marlee Dias, who was, what an amazing program, a nice 13-year-old girl, interviewed by an even nicer 13-year-old girl, Taryn Robinson, Keith Robinson's lovely daughter, and we did a book giveaway at that event as well, 300 copies of Marlee's book was given away free to the public at that event as well. That was a lovely event, tons of kids in the audience, we loved it. And then, last slide of just the whole five-year recap, Nadine Burkheris, you know, incredible event there as well. Richard Rothstein, The Color of Law, his book, a really profound and brilliant presentation and book, he spoke to your sophomore civic students as well. Those two instances of fan speakers speaking to sophomore civic students was the result of conversations and meetings I've had with Nicole Parker from ETHS, where she had reached out to me with the new civics requirement in Illinois to see, she felt, and she's correct, that there would be fan speakers that would be of great value to those civic students, and could I assist her in perhaps getting some of these speakers to say yes. Neither speaker charged a fee to speak to the civic students. I was able to, especially with Rothstein, because Rothstein was not on a book tour, he did charge for his events, but he waived his fee to speak to the students, so that was great. And then the bottom row, Diamond DiCasio, Rihanna Holman, and Phil Andrew were part of the first-ever Fan Fellows event that we did here at ETHS, and it included, in the slide right next to that, Ino Danowski, Molly Hartenstein, were the two leaders of the Fan Fellows, you'll hear about a little bit more, which are our group that we launched as a pilot group, an experimental group, 16 high school juniors from four different high schools in the community. Ino and Molly were the co-leaders of the group, both of them ETHS juniors. Of the cohort of 16 students, 10 were from ETHS, and the event itself was held at ETHS, and I might add then moderated, that little mini-panel of Diamond, Rihanna, and Phil was moderated by Dr. Campbell. And then last, coming up, as I mentioned, Zachary Wood, who will be interviewed by Heidi Keebler-Stevens from The Tribune. So, that's how that looks. Next slide. Goals, oh, you're good, go ahead. Goals for next year, you know, it's kind of an interesting internal conversation with having a fan, if you count that we did Rachel Simmons twice with a two-month interlude between her coming back, we did 30 speakers and nearly 70 public and private events. We're sort of, you know how when the kid takes the car out to see how fast the car can go, we're about as fast as the car can go right now, without some significant incre- don't get me wrong, it's okay. Still a lot of programs, you know, about as fast as it can go with current staff and infrastructure, so we're looking at it from the piece of, do we slow the car down a little bit, do we, how do we build, but you know, those are obviously internal conversations. I anticipate there's gonna be at least, this year, you know, last year we had six events in the auditorium, there were some availability issues, I think, like there was a month you didn't even have an opening, and then we had some cancellations, et cetera. This year you had 12 speakers, so double of last year. I don't know that we're gonna hit 12 again for next year, but we will be still quite robust. Nonetheless, that picture, as you probably know, was taken from when Brené Brown was here at ETHS, when we did a "Wands Up," welcome for her, that was kind of fun. All right, these are current Evanston sponsors of Fan, new for this past year, which I'll also note is the fifth year of Fan engagement in District 202 and 65. New to, for this year was Connections for the Homeless and the YWCA. We did also increase some corporate and individual donors as well, so we're glad for that, and that will be a continuing goal for next year is, and we've made some headway, I want to see more headway, particularly in terms of corporate donors. I mean, when we're doing 12 programs of this quality, plus leveraging some stuff within the school, we would like to see some of the corporations within Evanston. I'd like to be able to have some pretty good meetings with them and see if we can build up some of the corporate sponsorship of Fan programming within Evanston, so. These are the group, minus two, two of them were upstairs at the Little Theater in rehearsal, so we don't have Leona Wallace or Emma Barretto are not in this picture, but these are the Fan Fellows that you see right there. They were having a great time doing a little photo shoot. So the goals is to, a couple things, one is we're gonna be developing that Fan Fellows model, trying to figure out what it is, essentially it's juniors doing a fan program, picking the title, picking the topic, picking the speaker, work being mentored by myself and other Fan staff and volunteers, so they have this whole experience. So, thinking about what would that look like, should we try it again? The group, you know, a couple things we know pretty intuitively, 16 is too many, we might experiment with seeing if we do a Fan Fellows group just at ETHS and another one at Just Nutria, and see like how that works, keep them all, we're not sure, we're gonna throw a bunch of pasta at the wall for a minute, so I don't really have anything, you know, significant to tell you. In addition to the Fan Fellows thing, we're looking at maybe if we could think about, because of, you know, especially juniors are so busy, if we could turn it into an occasional after-school club, maybe twice a month, maybe once a month even, where they could just be in school and go directly to a Fan Fellows meeting, instead of going home and trying to come back on Sunday nights or something to the Fan Office, just to see if we can figure out a convenience factor them there for those students. Other goal is to look at Latinx, Asian, Middle Eastern, LGBTQ speakers, continue diversifying what we're offering for that, is remains always additional goals, but particularly this year, and I think Marcus and I, excuse me, Dr. Campbell and I have had a number of conversations along those lines, and so both the will, the funding, and the intent is all present, so I think we'll see what happens. Upcoming, some forecasts, I bet, let's play, do you know who that is? So that, of course, is Associate Justice Sonia Sotomayor. She has a double launch coming out in fall and September of two books, a middle school book and an elementary school book, a picture book for young readers, so we're hoping to get her, it's also based off of her biography, which came out a couple of years ago, so we're hoping to have her come and probably do a book giveaway, so cross your fingers, you know, people say, "You could go get her, can't you go get her?" I say, well, I don't usually tell Supreme Court Associate Justices quite what to do, but let's see what happens.
Anybody can do it.
I don't know. I don't know. We'll see.
What to do. No one says no to Lonnie.
You know, we'll just see, it depends on, you know, well, anyway, okay, it just depends. Ibram Kendi, the brilliant Ibram Kendi, I've been watching video of him all day, been working with Dr. Campbell and the group that is organizing the Parent Seminar Day that will be in mid-September here at ETHS. So, the seminar day is on a Saturday, and he'll be a keynoter for the Saturday, the, Dr. Campbell's team has already reached out to him, so what we're looking to do is leverage on a Friday night event with Dr. Kendi that would be open to the public also here at ETHS, so he's a, he's a very interesting man. Have you watched a lot of video of him? He's, I like him. He is Professor of History at International Relations, American University, and author of Stamped From the Beginning: The Definitive History of Racist Ideas in America, which won the National Book Award for Nonfiction two years ago. Remarkable young intellectual, he did a whole speech about what is an intellectual, it was pretty interesting. Carol Anderson, I've been talking to Dr. Campbell about Carol Anderson, she's the Charles Howard Candler Professor and Chair of the African-American Studies Program at Emory University. She has a brand-new book coming out this fall called One Person, No Vote: How Voter Suppression is Destroying Our Democracy. Interesting topic right now, making me, I'll be blunt, slightly nervous with the Supreme Court decision this week, so I'm gonna be looking at that, the new book is coming out. It is definitely the history of voter suppression in the United States, it has this whole historical angle to it, so, and she is a deep, brilliant professor, so I would love to host her, we're gonna take a very close look at it. Soraya Chamali, she's a writer and media critic and director of the Women's Media Center Speech Project, has her book coming out called Rage Becomes Her: The Power of Women's Anger. Probably, it's been a topic for her for some time, she's considered one of the top people in looking at this, very brilliant and insightful, really on the leading edge, and this book is, they're gonna be, her publisher is making a very big deal out of this book, so I think this'll be a very interesting get if we, if she says yes to coming for us, so I hope she does. This is gonna be very interesting, Jonathan Haidt, I'm not, most of what I'm showing you will likely be at ETHS, but just also giving you some forecast, for example, not exactly sure where Jonathan Haidt is gonna end up, not Haidt-Hight. Jonathan Haidt is a very interesting guy, multiple books, he's right now the Thomas Cooley Professor of Ethical Leadership at NYU's Stern School of Business. His brand-new book, which is an extension of a, an article he wrote for The Atlantic that went hugely viral called, as is, I think, also the name of the book, but the article was called, The Coddling of the American Mind: How Good Intentions and Bad Ideas Are Setting Up a Generation for Failure. And, I'm sort of thinking, I wanna do, and I don't know, maybe it's just my own mood, but I'm thinking, we need a little bit of comic relief, just a touch here and there. So W. Kamau Bell, you may have recognized him, stand-up socio-political comedian, executive producer of the Emmy Award-winning CNN docu-series called United Shades of America with W. Kamau Bell. His new book coming out, The Awkward Thoughts of W. Kamau Bell: Tales of a Six-Foot-Four African-American, Heterosexual, Cisgender, Left-leaning, Asthmatic, Black and Proud, Blurred, Mama's Boy Dad and Stand-Up Comedian.
Mama's Boy.
What's not to like, right? Questions, comments? I want to say a couple more things. Special thanks first, and I should have done this first, but then the slide went up. Special thanks, the D-202 Board, we are so grateful for your constant support, your good humor, your willingness to attend programs en masse, your willingness to even delay the start of your own board meetings when you come out, your support, the financial support, putting so little tiny bit of money, not such a tiny bit of money, in the budget for Fan. Dr. Witherspoon, your leadership as superintendent, it is just such a beacon, and we're grateful, we're grateful that you are in the audience so often, when you're such a busy person, we thank you. Dr. Campbell, of course, I mean, I, you know, my partner in thought for the past five years, my friend, my son's principal, and Fan Board Member, whose contributions would be difficult in this short period of time to really articulate what we call Team ETHS, which includes, quickly, Robbie Brown, Keith Robinson, Drew Echolus, Ann Hunwickley, Austin Mary Collins, Matt Driscoll and his staff, Eddie Dunlop and his staff, Nick Gale, Clarence Gregory and his staff. The Evanston faculty, parents, and students, including particularly this year, Nicole Parker, for attending the Fan Programs in such huge quantities. Special thanks to Evanston community for supporting financially, the nonprofits, the corporations, the individuals, the schools, which include Royce Moore District 65, Caravalli Beacon, the Center for Talent Development, and St. As. The numerous Evanston volunteer liaisons, specifically Anya Tanya Vudi, Sarah Price, Carrie Simone Adijie, Judy Rubovitz, Pam Tingly, Anne Marie Anderson, and Nancy Giampietro. You heard about the book distribution, ETHS students receive service hours for working at Fan Events. I told you already about the Fan Fellows, told you about that piece. I will note parenthetically, Brené Brown did a nice Facebook Live segment from Dr. Witherspoon's office, which was kind of nice, she was showing the Wildcat banner to her 25 billion watchers. Currently, 11 Evanston-based corporations and nonprofits are annual sponsors or strategic partners, in addition to 202 and 65, and as of, I just opened up, I went to the mailbox, just got a check from another Evanston family participating in our individual family donor groups, we are now at 16 Evanston families now participate in that. I did bring some flyers from the Zach Wood, I'll leave them here in case you guys want a flyer, it's for the upcoming programs, so I'll leave those for you, and I'm happy to take any questions, comments, concerns, or advice. Particularly the advice.
Thank you, Lonnie.
So, anyone?
Thank you, Lonnie.
Thank you. My pleasure. My pleasure.
Thank you.
Our pleasure.
Questions from the board? Mike?
I don't have a question, but I certainly have a comment. You know, most communities in the country don't have this.
No.
They just don't. And, you know, it's, you watch this, I mean, you live it over years, and then you have this recap that packs that all in, you know, even though I knew about all that, it's still like, wow. You know, it's, it's really a remarkable effort, and such a huge service to the community, and the greater community, you know, beyond Evanston even, and I just want to stress how fortunate I feel to live in a community that has this, and I also want to note that without the work of your work and the work of your organization, we don't have the bandwidth to do this on our own. We couldn't do this on our own. It's just not possible. And so, for that contribution and that partnership, you know, I thank you.
Thank you. I will, not that I want to argue with a board member, but I would say, I have been nothing short of flabbergasted by the amount of incredible programming that this school pumps out on its own, from whether it's from parent groups, affinity groups, student groups, there is so much quality programming that is happening at ETHS, both for within its four walls and outward, that you might be slightly selling yourself a little bit short, I bet you could pump out a fair amount of this, but I do take the compliment, thank you for the compliment.
Other questions? If not, I want to just agree with what Mark has said, it is really incredible having the opportunity to see all these speakers, I'm already excited about next year, I've written, I've written down the names. You've planned my summer reading, I was thinking, what am I gonna read? It's like summer's finally here, so now I have like about four books to read, so thank you.
Some of those books aren't out yet, so, but Ibram Kendi is out, I would start there if you haven't read it yet.
She won't feel so guilty not reading all at once.
No.
Right, yeah, that's right.
That's right. That's right.
You really do provide such an amazing resource to our community.
We love, I know I speak on behalf of all of the leadership of Fan when I say that it is a deep pleasure doing programs in this building. You know, I know I ran through their names really fast, but, you know, people like Lee Austin, you know, not that I get in the middle of pay issues, but give 'em more, you know? It's just, he is just, from walking us out to the car at the end of the night, to keeping some of the hangers-on at bay, to just being so anticipating needs and keeping us cool and smiling and welcoming security staff. Robbie, you know, Robbie, Robbie wants, wants the next 2,000 person one, you know, he doesn't want these like 500 people, it's like, ah, what's 500 people, that's nothing, you know? Bring me another 2,000 persons, so, I mean, it's just, it runs like clockwork, it's extraordinary, it's nothing short of extraordinary. I can't, I know I've said it many times, but you don't know, I know, how unique that experience is from our perspective, coming into the building, and just the service that is offered, from the auditorium, security, everybody, you know, Dr. Witherspoon on down, so we're very grateful, thank you so much.
Thank you, Lonnie. Thank you. Thank you, Lonnie.
That is, good, very good, thank you.
Keep it coming, Lonnie.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
And I'm gonna say something to Lonnie while Marcus is.
All right, okay. All right, Dr. Campbell, you are next, and I see you've, you already got us all set, so we're gonna hear another incredible report on social consciousness programming.
Yes, I have. All right. Thank you, Madam President. This is Lauren Hamilton, our equity analyst, who is pretty much my left and right hand in planning equity here at ETHS. We have so much going on, and over the past decade, we've really decentralized a lot of our equity programming, and Lauren has been great at just coordinating all of the efforts that we have going in many different directions. So tonight, we want to just summarize a little bit of our social consciousness work that we engaged in over the course of this academic year. Just a brief agenda, goals for our summit series, we'll share a few key highlights, give you some student feedback, and tell you what to expect for next year, and Lonnie just alluded to a little bit of it, and that is we're planning our first parent summit for the fall. Goals.
Wonderful, yeah. So when I joined you all here in February, you were specifically talking about the Black Student Summit, this presentation will cover all of our summits, but generally speaking, the goal that we have for these student events is to really bring students together in community and provide opportunities for them to get involved in discussion and engage in some identity exploration as relates to race, gender, sexuality, and other identities that intersect and affect their walk-through life here at the school and within the world. And, another thing that we are really concentrating on is strengthening and building those relationships between students, between students and their educators here at ETHS, and within the broader Evanston community. And then, overall, something that I'm really tuned into is learning and listening from our students, they share a variety of experiences, and using that to inform some of the equity work that we are doing here. So those are the goals that we have.
Some highlights from each summit. This is our Black Student Summit, this was the first year that we did not separate students with a gender binary, and that came directly from student voices, and we were pleased to host 809 students for our Black Student Summit, which is roughly 80% of the student population here at ETHS. And we were also very pleased that this was the first, one of the, this was the first year that we did a preregistration, and we had very close to 800 students who preregistered for the summits prior to the summit occurring, which was, we were very grateful for that. Our students were really looking forward to and anticipating the two days. Just highlight from our LGBTQ+ summit, you can add anything, our LGBT+ summit, this is our, Pigeon Pagones, who opened the summit with a keynote, did a great job at talking about what it means to be intersex, and it was a very much a learning space for all of the participants, students and staff and faculty who were involved, and it was once again a very powerful, powerful day for our LGBTQ+ students and their allies. Our Latinx Summit also was very powerful this year, and we worked with a YPAR, the Youth Participatory Action Research Partnership with Northwestern University, Alejandro Corian, the professor there really worked tirelessly with our students and our staff member, Margarita Viscara, and I believe they planned just about almost every Saturday, maybe twice a month for a good eight or nine months, in pulling together this student-led, student-centered framework and planning the summit, and the students also did a great job at facilitating those workshops that they formed based on those Saturday sessions. Our Asian and Middle Eastern Summit, this is the third, I believe, the third Asian/Middle Eastern Summit that we've had, and we are excited that this summit continues to grow, and with 127 attendees this year, our first summit had roughly 30 to 40 students, last year had 80 students, and this year, 127 students, and we're continuing to grow that day as well. Feedback.
Yes, so, as always, we want to hear from our students, we want to hear the things that we are doing really well when it comes to planning these events, and also ways that we can grow and accommodate to their needs and desires, so we'll go summit by summit. So some of the feedback that we've gotten regarding the Black Summit has come from surveys and just informal conversations with students, and they're really interested in having a student keynote, whether it's the opening or the closing assembly for that day. We typically bring in a adult, whether it's a scholar, this year we had Dr. Eve Ewing, we also had Inky Johnson keynoting the events, along with some faculty members, and they said, you know what, we want to hear from one of our peers, so that's something that we are considering as a student planning committee, and also the staff planning committee. Some feedback from the LGBTQ+ summit participants. Some feedback from the LGBTQ+ summit participants. Generally, so this summit has been growing as well over the years, and students are just saying, you know, we want to accommodate more participants, let's push that registration cap. So, we're thinking about pushing that, pushing that next year up to 300 possibly. And also, just, they love spending time together, so trimming the content for the workshops and extending them longer than an hour even is something that they're interested in. For the Latinx Summit, we're working on getting the word out sooner, so more students are aware of the programming coming up. So, for the Black Summit, that was something that was a big deal, was making sure the students knew that this event was upcoming, so they could go ahead and register, so we didn't have a flood of like 300 students showing up the day of. So, that is something that is important for all summits, so that's something that we wanted to work on for Latinx summits as well. And then, they also provided on the survey that we sent out some suggestions about possible workshop topics. So, talking about machismo and giving a brief history of some Latinx movements in America. So, they're really tuned in and wanting to let us know what they're interested in speaking about and listening to. And then, for our Asian and Middle Eastern Summit, students are interested in having some workshops that are at least co-facilitated by other students. So, that was something that was instrumental in the Black Summit this year, and then has been important for the Latinx Summit, is those students who spend time throughout the year organizing this event alongside staff and faculty actually lead these workshops. That's something that the Asian and Middle Eastern Summit participants and organizers are interested in seeing.
Looking forward, oh, sorry, looking forward, some of the things that we are looking to do is to continue our recruitment efforts for our faculty and our staff, so that our organizers can have some, I guess, more of a bandwidth to accommodate and engage in planning. Host pre-summit focus groups to reach students who are unable to commit to the planning throughout the year. And so, we want to, we did that for our Black Summits, and we want to continue to do that for all of the groups that are, that are represented in the summit planning. And incorporate what has been learned from summits and student experiences into recommendations for our equity work overall as a school. So, those are some of the things that we're looking forward to doing. And because Lonnie mentioned this, it's a separate piece, we are also looking to plan our first parent summit, scheduled for September 6th?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth, where we have already begun to work with a group of parents about what they want to do, what they would like to see. There was a meeting just last week, and as Lonnie mentioned, Dr. Ibram Kendi will be speaking that Friday night. The parents want to talk about the history of race in America, how did we get here, just to provide some contextual understanding for some of the conversations that we're having here with students and faculty and staff here at ETHS. We're very excited, our parents are very excited, and we're looking forward to at least 300 parents attending for a half-day session in September, and we're looking to grow that over the next several years as well. And with that being said, we'd love to take your questions.
Fabulous. Thank you. Wow. What a year. Right, Phoebe.
As a student, I was able to attend the LGBTQ+ summit, and I just want to reiterate that it was amazing and a supportive environment, and also that it did have a good variety of events. And not only did it give students a place to express themselves, but also to feel welcome and to feel safe. I'd also just like to reiterate the feedback about including a student speaker. I know that that was for the Black Student Summit, but I think that including that in all the summits would be super, because just to hear from peers is something that's really helpful for any minority group. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. And whatever way we can continue to empower students to claim their voice in these spaces, we're down for it, and we're ready for it. So, thank you, Phoebe.
Padma.
Well, of course, this is amazing, and thank you both and everyone behind you that did all this great work. And one thing I want to, a couple of things I want to highlight, one is the development and the growth. Like, the Black Student Summit's been here longer, and we can see so much that you've done and you've learned and you've incorporated, which is great. And the second piece in your next steps, that last slide, what I really, really like, and I'm glad that you're, of course, you're doing it, I shouldn't say I'm glad, because I, you're way ahead of us on this, but really, taking that student voice and putting it into our equity work and all of our work, and getting that voice woven in, because I think that is incredibly important to the success of all of our efforts, is really making sure that the student voice is a part of it, and that you're proactively taking that from these summits and the work around the summits to apply it in other areas of our work is terrific. So, thank you.
Wonderful. Jude.
I just loved attending the Black Summit this year. As some of you may know, I attended with North Lawndale students, some of my students. And there was a very significant moment that has left a lasting impression in my mind, and I want to encourage you all to continue to reach out to students outside of our borders. So, it was a defining moment for me to witness the North Lawndale students just vocalizing similar fears as it relates to relationships with the police. It was the session with EPD, which I thought they did a fantastic job. But it was a moment where students from the inner city and students from Evanston were able to voice some of the same concerns and fears. And I think, I mean, just observing this, I think it's very empowering for young folks to know that they're, that they're not alone. And I thought that was a very powerful moment. And please continue to invite students outside of Evanston as well. It was a great moment to witness.
Thank you.
Great. Other comments?
Why, I just want to add how much I appreciate all of the summits, and it has been exciting watching it expand. And I just, what these students learn and all students in the school, even those not participating, know it's the day for a particular group's summit, which means that we have affirmed that group and really spoken to all their peers. So, I think in ways that we haven't even thought of, we're really, we're doing some very important work and really setting the tone, changing the culture in our city, not just in our school. And other schools watch, watch us and see us. So, thank you. Thank you for listening to those student voices. I know that students really have a lot to share, and when they're heard and acted, their opinions are responded to and acted upon, they feel affirmed, they feel respected, and they grow in their leadership ability too. So, thank you so much. Thank you.
And may I pile on?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, no, I didn't, I thought the board was done.
I'm sorry. I, so, you know, I always say every year just gets better and better, and I think this is a testimony to that. So, I'm excited about the parent summit, and I'm interested in knowing how you're getting that message out and how you're, how have you recruited getting parents involved. Because the last thing I want to hear is parents not knowing about it, or saying, oh, I wish I would have heard about that, or whatever, and it's summertime and you're doing it in September. So, just want to know, what's the, what's the work being done behind this, getting it ready?
Sure. So, I worked with Dr. Campbell to convene a committee of about 15 people, and since this is being planned over the summer, we got together a group of folks, so large, because not everyone can attend every meeting. But the reason for putting the event in September is to hopefully catch people when they're not too busy. As we all know, the later it gets, especially as it approaches springtime, things get really crazy around here. But the messaging and the recruitment and the communication about this event is going to be extremely crucial, because we want to reach parents who maybe don't necessarily feel connected to ETHS, who don't feel heard or seen. And so, I have a number of people on the committee. Mercedes Fernandez, who is the coordinator for Latino Advisory Committee. I have Ismaelis Nunez, who has just joined. Cory Wallace, who isn't able to commit, but is open to working with me and bouncing ideas to reach out to parents or guardians who maybe, who we need to reach out to most. And so, we're going to come up with a strategy. I definitely am open to advice, but it definitely won't just be an email, you know, it'll be messaging from students. We wanted to definitely tap into the wealth of student organizations and clubs that we have here to pass the message on to their families as well. So, we are in the very early stages of the planning process, but this is definitely going to be an undertaking and build momentum for more of these conversations and events to take place throughout the year.
Yeah, and we pulled from the ETHS boosters, we pulled from ETHS Parents Engaged, we've also pulled from our Eban, Evanston Black Advocacy Network, and from the Latino Advisory Council. So, we have representatives from all of those parent groups to work on as a core team for planning the summits.
So, I'll give you some advice, just a little. I would suggest, especially the group that you're going after, that you definitely tap into organizations in the community, because usually, if not, they have deeper relationships with parents than, you know, the school district or the students or whatever, especially the group you're trying to go after. So, if, you know, just as an idea, like, how do you increase that participation through student organizations or nonprofit organizations that are serving youth?
That certainly came up at the last meeting that I attended. At the end, we were talking about engaging community partners, as be a part of the planning as well and working with those parents. So, thank you for that, Ms. Parsons.
Well, then, you know, you've got our vast TV audience.
You know, and you have, you have sporting events. I'm just thinking outside of the box, like, how do we encourage them? And, and so, you're right, it has to be non-traditional.
It has to be fast, too, because we're talking, two weeks after school starts? Three weeks after?
We've got about a month after, yeah, start.
Good job.
Yeah, yeah.
Also, I wanted to point out also that this could, one of the advantages of doing this at the very beginning of the school year is you can use that as a springboard to continue to engage these parents throughout the school year instead. So, yeah.
Yeah, that's exciting stuff. I mean, we've been talking about how do, how do we engage parents more broadly and more meaningfully ever since I've been here, and probably a long time before that, right? And this, this is, this is good stuff.
This is good.
You know, this could be a big step forward in pushing down that road. It's good.
And we want to do a really good job the first time.
Well, yeah.
So that, so that, and give just enough so that people really want to do more and come back for more in the later years.
Right.
Good stuff.
Excellent. All right. Dr. Witherspoon, were you going to make a comment?
You know, I just wanted to pile on about how important this work really is. And, you know, it really is critical to reaching the district goals. Our district goals are anchored in equity work. The idea that everything we do is about addressing and achieving equity, so every child can flourish. But in that, we have goals about academic achievement and about student well-being. And, you know, if you reflect as any human being, all of us as adults, we're all fragile. And it doesn't matter what point in life we're in, it's so important that we feel affirmed and feel that our identity is respected. But I think many of us, and Phoebe will do the best of this in the room, can identify what it was like to be teenagers, and how even that is magnified, the yearning to be accepted, to belong, to be affirmed in who you are. And to think that we have this social consciousness series that reaches out, and whether it be your culture or your religion, your sexual orientation, your racial identity, your gender identity, whatever aspect is you as a human being, and I need to pluralize that, or aspects are you as a human being, to attend a school where you, as a human being, feel affirmed and belonging, is not only going to, to, we hope, build a good relationship with students and within the school, but it's going to create a school where we can achieve those district goals at the highest level. So, I think this is not just programming, this is systemic, and it's really big. And I applaud Marcus and Lauren and, and, and all the many, many students and faculty and staff and community members who have given so much of their time and commitment to make these social consciousness events work in a very systemic way.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. All right, thank you. So, our next item is the first reading of the Press Policy Issue Number 98. Dr. Babus, you take the lead on this?
Yeah, I'll just provide a brief overview. The policies under consideration are in your packet, along with a five-year review. There are no changes to those five-year review policies. Press periodically does a five-year review, just to put them in front of us to take a look. And so, so that's, that's what the situation is with the five-year review. I'll just run through these quickly. 660 is cursive writing, so that's an elementary, middle school thing. We won't be adopting that. I've, you know, my third-grade teacher probably is cringing right now, but, you know, she, but that is definitely an elementary and middle school piece. I think there might be some discussion around 7340, that's student records. We're recommending that, that has to do with placing the SAT score, if a parent wants it, on the transcript. I think that's up for discussion. I don't, I wouldn't necessarily recommend that. We were required, the way this works is, for a time period, we were required to do that. We never actually had to do it, because the state legislature rolled it back at the last minute for the current seniors, the seniors who just graduated, rather, so they never had their transcript included, including their SAT score. But, but now, there's a second go-edit that wants to make it optional. I would recommend that we not do that, because if you include it on a transcript, when the transcript goes out, it gives a college or university the option to say no. And some of our students apply to test optional schools. And if a parent unknowingly says, yeah, put, put that on the transcript, it gives a university a reason to say no. And finally, Accelerated Program 6135, I've looked into that quite a bit. That is, the intent of that policy has to do with early entry into kindergarten and early acceleration in elementary and middle school. I think about the math program that we benefit from in District 65 that accelerates students. It does not, so that's primarily a unit district and a K8 policy. That said, we could certainly take a look at and codify our entries into, you know, the accelerated math program, and also looking at our chem-phys program, because that really is an example of an accelerated pathway that we do have criteria for. But the recommendation at this time is not to adopt, because it's primarily a K8 and a unit district policy. But I think those would be the ones, if we were going to have discussion, we would have discussion around, but we could discuss anything on the list.
Jonathan? I would like to discuss the Accelerated Placement Program. The rule, not the rule, the policy that's been recommended by ASB is to effectuate a new state law that takes effect on July 1st, dealing with accelerated placement. And law does say, each school district shall have a policy that allows And law does say each school district shall have a policy that allows for accelerated placement. And placement is not limited to the early grades, like early entry to kindergarten. It includes, it includes accelerating a child in a single subject, which is something that we do all the time at ETHS. So, I don't think it would require much changes in the way we do business to acknowledge that we do offer accelerated placement. I do think one of the great things that is in the policy that would help us is it provides the superintendent or designee shall annually notify the community, parents, guardians, students, and school personnel about the accelerated placement program, the process for referring a student for possible evaluation for accelerated placement, and the methods used to determine whether a student is eligible for accelerated placement. We've had a lot of conversations over the years about how some parents know how to work the system for their, for their student, and that, you know, but these opportunities to just to have them on the books when they aren't explained and made, you know, in plain language how they're available to parents, I think that would be an addition to the accelerated placement program that we already have.
Okay. Yes?
I, I would, that's essentially what I said to start, so I, I think we could support that. I'm all for codifying what we do. And in terms of an update, that would come in the course selection guide, very transparent document. So, I think that would make, make a lot of sense.
On that SAT thing, I was just thinking about it. One problem with making it optional is if you're a university and you get a transcript from ETHS and it has an SAT score on it, then you're going to assume that somebody who didn't put their SAT score on it, didn't put it on it because they didn't do very well.
Especially from the same school.
So, that's another reason, maybe not to make it optional.
Right, great.
And, and as we all know, every student has the option or the ability to have their SAT score submitted to any college or university where they apply. And as we also know, some of them take it more than one time, because they, you know, they want a better their score. And, and while it should be the best score going in, they should have the right to make sure that, that what's being submitted is what they want to have submitted.
Yes, who's make decisions about how to do that, too? Okay, other comments, so?
So, just so we're clear, this is the first reading, and the second reading will be at the next board meeting, and I'll note those changes to the recommendation.
Okay. Alright, next item is comments from the public. Do we have comments, Doctor Babus?
We have no comments this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, next item is FOIA. We have two FOIAs listed. Anything you'd like to say about them? Three.
Three. Yeah, we have Pepper Brink, two from Pepper, Peppin Brink, and one from Cowlin. And the Cowlin, that's a large commercial FOIA that we've been working with and will continue to work with. We're, that's one of the responses, most recent response.
Thank you. Alright, so we are at Board Committee Reports. And the first report listed, and it was in our packet, is from the Discipline Committee. Jude, are you gonna talk to us about this?
I'll share some highlights from the last committee, Discipline Committee Report, which was held on May fifteenth. So, some highlights regarding old business, Kingian Nonviolence Training, which will be happening this summer, was talked about. That will be held at the Civic Center. The goal is to register twenty-five students, and I think they're pretty close to that number now. That effort is being led by Pam Smith from the Addy Wyatt Nonviolence Center in, on the west side of Chicago. And they're very excited about this training. So, students will learn about Kingian Nonviolence Strategies, Doctor King's Nonviolent Strategies, Seven Principles, Nonviolence, Kingian Nonviolence Principles. They'll also be charged to identify an issue in the community that they would like to address from the perspective of one of the principles, Kingian Nonviolence Principles. These students will work twenty hours a week, and they will get paid eight, eight dollars and fifty cents an hour, which sounds good to learn about nonviolence. And ultimately, the students will be encouraged to, as they transition, well, we're focusing, the training is focusing on sophomores and juniors, but they're, they'll be encouraged as they transition back to the next school year to make use of what they've learned, to try to change, well, make restorative justice more a part of our culture and, a school culture and how we do discipline here at, at the district. Also, old business, the digital program, an update was given for the digital program. So, the PBIS Committee introduced an app that tracks incentives for students. And that's another, again, another way of trying to be less punitive and incentivizing and giving positive, doing positive interventions for behavior that we like to see. Still under review, but that was, a presentation was given two meetings ago, and they're considering using that app as well.
Jude, is that kind of like for exercise or dieting, giving, sort of giving you a regular progress report on, on their, you know, the positive, the?
Yes, and?
The points you're accumulating, is that sort of the idea?
Yes, exactly, and especially paying attention to the behavior that you, and instead of telling them, oh, you've lost, you've gained all this weight, the moment they lose a little bit of weight. You wanna make sure that you positively and reinforce that, you know, kinda shaping behavior. Okay, then we had, we talked about new business. So, in terms of our dress code, which is making news across the nation, there was a focus group Doctor Robinson had with the safety folks, the folks who have boots on the ground, and just to kinda get their sense of how this first year went. So, more deep, details about that focus group are available through Mr. Robinson. But basically, the sense is that it went very well. Less write-ups for inappropriate dress and more buy-in from the students, because they recognize that we're trying to deal with this from a position of equity. We're considering everyone, and they feel it, it's more just. The goal is to have other focus groups with other staff and students as well, and that will likely happen in the fall. Recommendations for this upcoming year, to have a more robust restorative justice program here at ETHS to raise our capacity of peace warriors within the building, and to increasingly try to work with teachers to use restorative justice as an option in certain instances where we have discipline infractions. Also, finally, another highlight regarding our bullying policy, there is a group of parents, as most of you know, that have taken great interest in this. They formed a little, a little committee to look, to review the bullying and harassment policy and to see how we can better speak to our students, to add value to it. So, they're still, they will be working. The district has met with this group two times, and so that work will be ongoing, so stay tuned for that as well. And those are some highlights from the Discipline Committee meeting.
Great, great. Thank you, thank you, Jude.
You're welcome.
So, we also have a report in the packet from the Park School Advisory Committee. I know Jonathan and I both attended that meeting.
I guess the, I mean, the report's in writing, but I think the bottom line is that there's some very good news and some not-so-good news. The not-so-good news is that we've got three hundred thousand dollars in, over budget that we have to deal with. The good news is that we are recruiting more and more students from outside the district who pay full tuition at Park. And so, if that, if we can make that trend continue, that will be very good for everybody.
Great. Alright, wonderful. Okay, now we are at the student report. Phoebe, looking forward to this.
So, obviously, the school year's over, so not that much has been going on. But the last day of school, June fourth, was a lot shorter than I believe in my past years and years before that. I thought, and some of my other students thought, that it was a good culminating length. I also found it to be a perfect time period to like sign yearbooks and just say goodbye to everyone, so that was really nice. But this summer so far, I have been working with other student leaders, mainly Molly Hartenstein, to work on gun violence prevention activities recently and throughout the summer. So, recently, both Molly and I spoke on June second at the Moms Demand Action Gun Violence Prevention Rally. I think that that went really well, it was really great. There were a lot of people there and a lot of students that spoke. Emma also spoke, so that was nice to hear her. So, since then, Molly has been in contact with Chicago Student Activists. And we are currently doing planning around the June fifth, the June fifteenth Saint Sabina Rally and Peace March. It's supposed to be a pretty big thing. Students from Parkland are gonna come, they're doing a tour this summer, so their first stop is gonna be at this rally. Chance the Rapper, Jennifer Hudson, and a couple other people are gonna be performing as well, so it's supposed to be pretty big. So, we have secured funding from the Evanston Sector of Moms Demand Action and People for Safer Society for buses from ETHS to the rally in Chicago. So, we did that in hopes of getting as many students as possible to join the rally. So, that's like the big thing that we're focusing on right now, 'cause it's this Friday. And then throughout the rest of the summer, we have a lot of other events that are planned, and Chicago students, we're trying to support them in what they're doing this summer as well, so fun things to come. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thanks, Phoebe. And Doctor Witherspoon?
Well, Phoebe, you remind us that, that student leaders don't take the summer off. And great, nice report. My report is really short, but, but I do wanna, first of all, just to all of the board members who were able to participate in the graduation ceremony, a huge shout-out to you, to all of our staff, and, and all of the folks that, that, that equally were involved in making that day such a success. I pay shout-out to them. Many of them were volunteering to be there, others were on duty, but it didn't matter either way. Everybody had to make their way out to Hoffman Estates. And all I can say is this, as you're driving out there, you keep wondering, why are we doing this? But once you get there, it's really nice, and, and then we forget, why are we doing this? But next year, we should be back in Evanston and at Northwestern University. But I also wanna give a shout-out to the class of twenty eighteen. I thought that, that this class was astonishingly wonderful at graduation. They represented themselves, their, their class and their, their experiences at ETHS, and ETHS in general, in just the most beautiful manner. And, you know, you look out into that audience, and then you see them come up on the stage, and you do really remind yourself that you really are looking into the eyes of the future. And, and it's, it was very gratifying. I'd like to point out that we had an abundance of floral arrangements, and it was just beautiful. But you may have noticed that there were orange begonias completely lining the front of the stage. Those begonias are now in the planter at the front of the high school, completely circling around that planter. You cannot see them as well yet from the street, 'cause they need to grow up just a little higher. But I just wanna remind everybody that as you drive by or as you look at that this summer, that is a tribute to the class of twenty eighteen. And those begonias were on the stage at their graduation, and they will be blossoming and, and adding orange color to the front of ETHS all summer long.
Very nice.
So, it's very, very special, I think. Just a reminder that Lonnie already pointed out that June twentieth, Zachary Wood will be here for a fan event. That will be in our auditorium. Summer school started on June sixth. We had that last day on June fourth. We took a break because we, we just loved a vacation, and we started with twelve hundred students the next morning. So, so we have a huge summer school turnout. It's going beautifully. And for me, one of the fun things is to see all of the incoming freshmen who participate in Access ETHS and/or some other courses here, doing activities and, and participating around the school in those activities. It's really fun to see them. They're here, and they're already wild kids. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. You're right, it is fun to see the students, incoming freshmen. Alright, we are now going to convene as a finance committee, Committee of the Board. And Mary is getting all set up to go over the tentative budget for fiscal year two thousand nineteen.
Thank you. Sorry for that setup time. I didn't wanna interrupt anyone else's time by loading my presentation. Okay, so, I have about, well, I'm not gonna tell you how many slides I have, 'cause I don't want anyone, I don't want anyone to be counting. It's nice to be up so early, though. I'm not usually up before nine o'clock, you know? So, I might just talk for a while.
Oh, no!
So, in the packet, you had the hundred and fifty or so odd page tentative budget booklet. Just a reminder, it's shorter than the final book that will come to you in the fall. We have a couple of sections that we don't update this early. You know, to be honest, everything at this point is an estimate anyway. It's certainly our best estimate at this time. But we have some other information, like the organizational section and statistical information, that we'll update for you in the fall. So, this book is much smaller than the real thing will be in September. So, I know you've all been through this, and I really, every year when I sit down to do this presentation, I try to think of ways to change it, but it's really basic information, and so I'll try to make it a little less painless in, in my discussion of the slides.
But Mary, if you keep getting the same results, don't change a thing.
I sort of feel a little bit like a broken record, but the honest truth is I think we're fortunate in that, because I think that a lot of people, you know, in the last few, I'm gonna say even, you know, eight to ten years, have really had very different presentations every year. And some of my counterparts that I hear from at some of my professional meetings, it really surprises me to hear some of the struggles that some of the districts are going through. And so, I do feel fortunate, I think, that we're a broken record in a good way, because our, our reports don't change drastically from year to year, and I'm kinda thankful for that. So, I hope they're not too boring for you, but I'll try to hit some highlights. So, just an outline, usually we talk about the financial overview, and then we talk about some revenues expenditures, and then sort of an analysis, just a quick summary of each fund, just so you know where they are compared to last year. We typically have always talked about some, like, financial planning or Plan B, and then just a little bit of logistical information for the final budget in September. And we'll talk about, a little bit about the state budget, some economic concerns, and then kind of an overview. So, this is the first time in a few years that I've actually been able to say that the state has passed a budget. Last year's slide said, you know, there had been no state budget in, I don't know, multiple years. So, I, I think that's a good thing. At least we know more than we have at this point in past years, to be honest. I, I don't wanna go into too much of the kind of dry material about the new state funding formula. But for us, the big concern was with this new evidence-based funding, or EBF as they call it, would it drastically change our funding numbers? I have another slide that goes into a little detail later, but basically, we had our largest state revenue stream, which was general state aid, came in pretty timely, it was pretty consistent. That has been combined with some other, what we call categorical aid. And, and so, when all these complicated formulas were done and over, we basically had flat, not much of an increase, not much of a decrease, and, and I've always kind of said if, if the state just- And I've always kind of said, if the state just leaves us alone, I think we'll be okay. So for now, I think it could be a lot worse. Certainly, some districts did get some additional money with this new funding formula. We didn't really expect to get much more, but I'm happy that we haven't lost any. I'm sure you've all heard by now, but towards the end of this budget agreement, they sort of slid in, kind of under the radar, some changes to the end of career T R S increases that are allowable by law. That does not affect us right now, because it only applies to contracts that are, that begin after June 30th of 2018. Our teacher's contract goes through, that's certainly the biggest part of it. The teacher's contract goes through the spring of 2021. So I like to just leave a couple of items on there, because to be honest, I've not seen a resolution one way or another, but they certainly are in the background now. And those two items are property tax freezes and pension funding. You know, Governor Ronner was really promoting those property tax freezes, and then all of a sudden, we kinda stopped hearing about them. You know, with upcoming elections, I'm not really sure how that will go. We certainly always have them in the back of our minds. So as I mentioned, the new E B F replaced general state aid and some of the categorical aid. Those payments are coming in on time. They did a big recalculation about a month or so ago, and the big question was, will districts get more or less, or the same for next year? And the answer for us was, we got $5,000 additional. So I'm not sure what we could do with that, but it's better than losing money. So those payments are coming in on time, and then some of the other remaining categorical aid items, like special education room and board, for example, those have some lag in the payments. It's not the worst we've seen, but it's not the best. We do have another large revenue that, you know, has been sort of on the discussion block for years, and that's the property replacement tax. Some people call it the corporate property replacement tax. Some people call it the personal property replacement tax. So far, it appears to be flat funding for us for the immediate future, and really have not heard anything about a sunset clause or anything for that. So that, as far as we know now, is just kind of business as usual. Again, just kind of always in the back of my mind, a pension cost shift, which we've been hearing about now for multiple years, and property tax frees, which I'm gonna say has been dropped for now, but you never know in Illinois. So those are the potential state threats. So just a little bit about economics. The Consumer Price Index has been as low as .7, .8 in the last few years. We're actually seeing that increase, which is what would make a property tax freeze especially unfortunate from the district's perspective. So in Cook County, the tax levy is a combination of two years, but those two years happen to be the same percentage this time. So we're looking at a 2.1% upcoming increase. As has been for a while, the state and city of Chicago bond ratings are junk or near junk. We always hear that those could affect local governments and their ratings. However, as you all know, we are happy to let you know that we did maintain our AAA rating this spring. So for now, we're good. Okay, so into some specifics about the budget, I try not to just read off a bunch of numbers, but again, I don't know any other way to say some of these things. So our overall budget is about 85.8 million in the tentative budget, and that's only about a 1.8% increase over the final budget for last year. And this includes all of our funds, bond and interest, and things that we don't consider operating funds. So when we talk about operating funds, those are really the ones that we do business out of each day. That budget is 76.2 million, and that's about a 2.3% increase over last year. And we think that's pretty consistent with increases that we experience for personnel costs due to contract obligations. In fact, that number is less than some of those contract obligations. And with some things like retirement and, you know, some kind of natural attritions, we do see a little bit better than what some of those personnel costs are actually increasing. So I feel like that's a pretty good number. I don't know if I'm doing something wrong, or if the batteries are... I need to point it up there, don't I? I'm trying to point it up. Okay, so as usual, we do try to conservatively estimate the revenues. If you remember last year, when we spoke to you about the state, at that time, we had more categorical revenues. They were about a quarter payment behind, so one of the four quarterly payments was always behind. So last year, we did, we actually cut that budget, because we felt like we might never get it. Some of that money has come in, but at least we feel like we don't need to cut those revenues anymore, and that that state funding will be flat for the most part, and that's not all bad. Our federal aid did have some increases, but also there are some associated expenses with those increases, like special education room and board. Okay, where am I supposed to? Okay, thank you. Usually, I just click it, and it just goes right away. Okay. Property taxes, as I mentioned, are a blend, but this year, it's really just a solid 2.1%. And we spoke about the replacement tax. So this was an interesting slide I just wanted to mention on E A Vs in our district. So we've had an increase in E A V for the third time in six years, which I think, you know, most people, other than possibly having higher tax bills as a result, people like to know that the property is recovering. And we're just back to where we were in 2011, before we had some dives in the E A V. So there was a triennial reassessment in there, 20, that was 2015. And so we're seeing the property values come back up, so. As far as student fees, we did not have an increase to the general school year student fees. And summer school fees were raised in the summer of 2017, so there was also no increase this year. We try not to raise those types of things every year. So just a quick chart, does not change much from year to year, so just a quick chart on where our revenues come from. No surprises, really. 84% comes from property taxes, and then other local revenues. There's a typo, actually, in the budget book on this pie chart, so I apologize for that. We'll make sure we get that fixed. The one in the budget book still talks about general state aid. So that has been turned into evidence-based funding, and then categorical state aid still exists, but it's a smaller piece of the pie chart, if you will. So no surprises here. This does not change more than a percent or two from year to year. And just a reminder, we'll get into a pie chart for expenses in a minute, but just a reminder that we do sort of live by the rules of values-based budgeting, and our goal has been for the last, I don't know, six, seven years, to either maintain or reduce the levels for contractual services, supplies and personnel, sorry, supplies and materials. And any personnel reductions have primarily been through attrition. So those are the, kind of the main rules that we live by each year, to try to keep cuts out of the classroom wherever possible. Okay, so here's the pie chart for expenditures. Again, I think this changed by a percent in a couple of categories, but salaries and fringe benefits are 78% of our overall expenditures. So that's no surprise, but those are typically the ones that may fluctuate by a percentage or so. The other larger areas, purchase services and tuition, which is our off-campus tuition, those are 8% and 7%. So our salaries, which is that biggest piece of the pie, of course, are increasing about 2.7%, which are due to those employment contracts. And again, a large freshman class, and so there were some additional required F T E positions based on the number of freshmen. That's in addition to some additions for last year as well. So they keep coming, and we keep educating them by doing whatever we need to. So, but I am proud that we are able to keep those increases to reasonable levels, even given the fact that we've taken on a lot of additional students in the past several years. So just a quick analysis of expenditures, fringe benefits had a moderate increase. Supplies and materials actually decreased by 2.7%. Purchase services decreased, but not by a lot. I'm happy if those things can decrease a little bit, or at most stay the same. Capital outlay, number to number, the numbers increased by about 7%. But that's a difficult one, really, to pinpoint, because it really just depends on how the project payments flow and how the bond funds are obtained. And then, as I said, tuition is expected to increase slightly, but we've had some really large decreases in the past few years. So when it increases slightly, it's still way below where we had been. Just some quick views of the funds for you. Education Fund, which is, of course, by and far our largest fund, had a 2.5% increase over last year with a budget of 67.1 million. And we talked about some of the reasons for that increase in staffing and negotiated salary increases. Operations and Maintenance Fund, that is about a 2.3% increase from last year, and it's at 7.63 million. Again, I think all of the increases were pretty much in line with each other and in line with what you would expect to see, I think, in any organization. Okay, there we go. Bond and Interest Fund, that doesn't change much from year to year. We will have some additional bond payments for the new money that we got this spring, but they don't kick in right away, so we're pretty similar to last year's budget on that. And our Transportation Fund was really pretty consistent with last year's numbers. I think it was about a $75,000 decrease. And I think that's one that we might actually be able to hone in a little better on in the fall, when we get some real estimates of what the state funding will be, so how much the revenue is, and how much we'll need for the expenditures. But I have to say, the Transportation Fund has been really managed well, and our costs have been decreasing over the years for that, mostly because of special education transportation. I M R F Fund is really one that stays very, much the same from year to year, unless our rates go up, and they have not gone up in quite a long time. Tentative budget for the Capital Fund shows about $3.5 million for summer 2019, but we'll have to kind of scale down the funding estimates when we see what will be available from the foundation and from the balance of our 2018 bonds. So we'll have some more information for that in the fall for you, and then we'll bring the C I P plan to you in November. So again, with values-based budgeting, instruction is always the top priority. I mentioned those other kind of rules that we live by. But we always try to maintain a reasonable student-teacher ratio and avoid personnel layoffs wherever possible, and really just achieve any savings through attrition. But we know that we're in an environment where we've been adding a few positions to handle the increase in students. So just some logistical things. Our financial strategies, nothing really changes from year to year. Wherever we can, we install capital expenditures that reduce operating costs. LED lights are a good example of that. We've explored our off-campus special education alternatives, and that's in full swing right now, three blocks away. So that'll be, more information will be coming as we have it for you. And we continue the wellness strategies that help with our healthcare costs. And we're really constantly looking at processes and departments here to reorganize where it makes sense. I mentioned the Plan B. You know, if some of those things that have been hanging around for years were to come down, we'd have to really talk about what comes next. For now, I think with stable funding, we don't really have to have those conversations, but they're always there, hanging over us. So on August 9th, we will publish our budget hearing notice for the final budget. And then September 10th, we'll conduct a budget hearing. We'll have a little more information. We're just getting some information from the county on our most recent levy. Just got some of that today. I don't think there's much the state will update by then, but if there is, we'll certainly have it for you. There may be some adjustments to overall numbers for that final budget. It will be a balanced document, and if we have any, we'll give you some property tax update, and then any final adjustments, and then also add on those couple of sections, three sections, analysis, operational, and statistical sections for you in the fall, and that's when this will probably double in size. Okay, that was a lot of slides. I do okay, Marcus?
Nice. Very good.
Not quite 15 minutes, but... So I don't have anything, you know, earth-shattering, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if I can.
That's what I love to hear a CFO say.
Yeah.
It's kinda boring, but it's not all bad.
Yeah, we don't like your...
So clear.
Some things are okay to be...
Okay, Pat has a question.
So, Mary, this is only my second year reading this document. So, but I just have to say that you truly are amazing, because it's clear, I understand it, and I don't look at these things every day like you do. And the amount of information, the way it's organized, the clarity, and of course, the beautiful bottom line are just amazingly appreciated. So, and I know that this is a lot of work, and that you are really preparing this all the time. As you're living through one budget, you're getting ready for the next one, so thank you.
Literally, this week, we had auditors in, starting our audit for fiscal 18. And I said, I can't really talk to you guys right now. You're gonna have to talk to the rest of the office, because I'm working on fiscal 19. So it's multiple years at once.
Right. So, yeah, truly amazing. So thank you so much. And one thing I just wanted to say, it's not so much a question as just an emphasis. In the budget letter, I think it was budget memo, there was, you know, obviously, you're trying to trim everywhere you can. And one of the things that was mentioned was, you know, professional development. We're trying to be maintained, or reduced, or whatever. Just keep it in check. And I just wanna say out loud, as a board member, that I personally see professional development as a means of supporting our students and all the great work that we do in the building. And so, you know, I know you all are on it, but I just wanted, as a board member, to say out loud that that's really important, and I support the school making decisions that also prioritize supporting our adults, because ultimately, that supports our kids. So I just wanted to say that out loud.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I will say that, and this may not be obvious, we may have talked about it in the past, but maybe not in the past two years, but we've tried really hard where we can to incorporate the professional development into some of the grant funding, partly because in some of the grants, it's actually a requirement. And so, you know, Title II, for example, really focuses on teacher quality. And so, and I use the term teacher, but really, it's educator. And so we have partially funded a position that does work on hiring qualified people. But then, we use the rest of the funds, I usually work with Pete, Marcus, and Scott Bramley, to determine everything from some departmental P D to some overall P D, like, you know, Avid, where a lot of people may go to Avid, or it may just be two or three math teachers at a state conference. And so it's kind of nice, actually, that some of that is imposed by those grant terms. But it's also a nice way to not have to use local funds in some of those cases, and kind of hit, you know, I don't like to say, kill two birds with one stone, but you get what you...
And you know, I'd like to also thank you for that comment, because I think it's really important that we very publicly acknowledge that professional development and training is just vital. We are a learning organization. One of the ways, though, that we are able to contain those costs is we're finding ways to get a bigger bang for the buck for what we do spend. So for example, tomorrow, all our administrators who evaluate, teachers, have required evaluator training. In the past, we would fund them to go to different places to get that training. Tomorrow, we're able to train 20 people for a fraction of the cost, because we have contracted to bring the training here and to a whole group of people at the same time. So it's not always, it's not that we're reducing the amount of professional development. We're trying to get a bigger bang for the buck for what we do.
Makes sense.
That's great. Thank you.
Other questions?
Jonathan? I had a quick question about the day school, which is, that will open not this coming fall, but the following fall, so it doesn't really have that much budgetary impact in FY19. But, and I know that we are not doing it for the purpose of saving money, but do you expect that there will be some positive financial impact of that in FY20?
Yes, it depends on the number of students who initially enroll. So certainly, the hope is that it would not have a negative effect even in the first year. But optimistically, I think it could have a positive effect financially, even in the first year.
From the savings of tuition.
Of not paying that money to outside districts.
And in subsequent years, it will definitely realize more of a savings. And I'll give you an example. Since our new Special Education Director came, in the last couple of years, this is even before the public day school... this is even before the public day school, in looking at how we provide service for students and how can we bring more students back on our campus, and that, we've already saved over a million dollars. And we believe that the students are getting better services because they're right here in their home community. So your question is well appreciated. And as Mary said, we think it's going to be a break-even the very first year, and then as, you know, more and more students participate, we actually think we're going to have a better product for less money.
And I think that was one of the reasons we really wanted to persist, is it really had two benefits. I mean, it certainly wouldn't be any more of a financial burden for us. In fact, it could very well result in a savings, I think, very quickly, but it also just made so much more sense from the student's perspective. So...
Yeah. Thank you for asking.
Other questions? Comments? Thank you for making the values-based budgeting so clear. That was really, I appreciate that. Yes. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you all.
Good job.
All right. Back to our agenda. We are at action items. The first item is to approve the tentative budget for fiscal year 1819.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ball.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. The next item is adoption of resolution to prohibit sexual harassment in Exhibit A, Policy 520.
So moved.
Second.
I'd like to discuss this.
Okay.
Okay.
Before you discuss it, since we are discussing it, could I ask somebody to read this for us, just so that it's in the record? Mark?
The resolution?
Yes, the resolution.
You want me to read it?
Yes, please.
Resolution to prohibit sexual harassment, whereas Section 10-20 of the School Code, 105 Illinois, I'm not going to read all these citations.
God, it's...
I was going to say, good luck to the person who reads it. Grant school boards other powers that are not inconsistent with their duties, whereas Section 1-5 of the State Officials and Employees Ethics Act includes school districts within the definition of a government entity. And whereas, Section 5-65 of the State Officials and Employees Ethics Act added, by, what, Paragraph 100-554, provides that all persons have a right to work in an environment free from sexual harassment, whereas Section 70-5 of the State Officials and Employees Ethics Act amended by section number, requires governmental entities to adopt an ordinance or resolution establishing policy to prohibit sexual harassment, which, at a minimum, includes, one, a prohibition on sexual harassment, two, details on how an individual can report an allegation of sexual harassment, including options for making a confidential report to a supervisor, ethics officer, inspector general, or the Illinois Department of Human Rights, three, a prohibition on retaliation for reporting sexual harassment allegations, including availability of whistleblower protections under the Act, the Whistleblower Act, and the Illinois Human Rights Act, and, four, the consequences, A, of a violation of the prohibition on sexual harassment, and B, for knowingly making a false report. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of District 202, Cook County, Illinois, as follows. Section 1, the Board adopts Policy 520, Workplace Harassment Prohibited, attached as Exhibit A, which contains the following: one, prohibition on sexual harassment; two, detail regarding how an individual can report an allegation of sexual harassment, including options for making a confidential report to an immediate supervisor, the building principal, an administrator, the nondiscrimination coordinator, a complaint manager, or the Illinois Department of Human Rights; three, a prohibition on retaliation for reporting sexual harassment allegations, and a statement regarding the availability of whistleblower protections under the State Officials and Employees Ethics Act, the Whistleblower Act, and the Illinois Human Rights Act; and, four, the consequences, A, of a violation of the prohibition on sexual harassment, and B, for knowingly making a false report. Section 2, any prior versions of Policy 520, Workplace Harassment Prohibited, adopted by the Board, are superseded by this resolution, and it calls for adoption and signature.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for reading that, Mike. Right.
Thanks for asking. It was a lot.
Jonathan, you have...
So I support adoption of the resolution, but as I was reviewing the resolution and the supporting policy, I think we need to talk about whether the definition of harassment, sexual harassment, that we are putting in our policy is broad enough. Because, and I hate to get into all this long reading again, but the definition of sexual harassment prohibited says, "District employees shall not make unwelcome sexual advances or request sexual favors, or engage in any unwelcome conduct of a sexual nature, when, one, submission to such conduct is made either explicitly or implicitly a term or condition of an individual's employment; two, submission to or rejection of such conduct by an individual is used as the basis for employment decisions affecting such individual; or, three, such conduct has the purpose or effect of substantially interfering with an individual's work performance or creating an intimidating, hostile, or offensive working environment." That definition perfectly tracks with state and federal law. That's exactly what we're required to prohibit as a matter of state and federal law. But I think that we could go further, particularly what we, you know, as our consciousness has been raised over the last couple of years. If, I want to suggest that we consider saying, "District employees shall not make unwelcome sexual advances or request sexual favors, or engage in any unwelcome conduct of a sexual nature, period." Those other things that it may affect your job, or that there may be a quid pro quo, they all make the sexual harassment worse. But that alone is sexual harassment, and we have the power to say, "We may not be required by state or federal law to do this, but these are our standards at ETHS."
I can't think of any reason why I disagree with what you're saying, except, well, not even accept, I don't disagree, but this is not an area where I have personally any expertise. And it seems to me that maybe we're required to do this by state law, right? Adopt something?
Right. Yeah. And Jonathan, you indicated that you are in support of the resolution.
Yes.
So what I was going to recommend is maybe we go ahead and pass this, and then take those ideas into the Policy Committee and bring in whatever expertise we need to really parse that idea, and then bring back a recommendation to the Board, and we can supersede this. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I did want to make one other observation. Not only does this limit sexual harassment, the prohibition, to when you've done these things, but all the things that modify it relate to fellow employees. So it's clearly, this policy only covers sexual harassment by an employee of another employee. It doesn't cover sexual harassment of students.
Yeah.
Yeah. Might be something else.
Right.
I was thinking that, as I'm hearing this conversation, I was thinking that, and I've been working on the pilot, it's pilot season, you know, the student handbook. And I think we need to look at the language, not just in this policy, but, you know, the language in the 710, which is the harassment of students prohibiting bullying and intimidation. And also 7180, to kind of go to what Jude had said earlier, the prevention and a response to bullying, intimidation, harassment. So, you know, I'm working on that, and I just see a nice connection here, and I think we should, as a policy committee, if that's okay, as a policy committee, kind of get these all out there together, look at the language, and then, you know, bring in attorneys as we need to kind of vet that.
So, question then. Do, because I didn't look into this, are we, do we need to pass this tonight, and then amend it, or should we just wait?
No, they're separate. The policy you already adopted.
Yeah.
That is our current policy.
That's our current policy.
That is the current policy. That was only put there as a reference. The resolution just states that we have a policy.
Right. The resolution is there because it is mandated by state law, that when you adopt the policy, then you have to follow it up with the resolution.
I see.
So you can adopt the resolution tonight, doesn't change the policy at the moment, but what I'm hearing said, it allows you to revisit the policy.
So the answer is yes. We do have to.
But the resolution, you...
Well, then let's pass the resolution.
Could we make a commitment to get this done by September, by the beginning of the school year?
Pete said he's working...
I'm just trying to do the math. I'm counting off the amount of, the amount of days and the availability of the Policy Committee, but I do think that we could, September, whatever the board meeting is in September, I think we could bring a first read.
September 11.
September 11?
Yeah.
I think we could get something on paper. Is there another one? We could at least do a first reading, and...
Well, I would recommend then...
Because I'm going to do all of them.
If it's all right with the Policy Committee, then, even before it meets, having this on the table, Pete, you could go ahead and contact our attorneys now, instead of waiting till the Policy Committee meets and then coming back to it. We could get, we could start getting their opinion, even in advance of the Policy Committee, which would really speed it up.
Yeah. I think, yeah, makes sense.
Yes. We'll do that.
Okay, so we should go ahead and...
Yes. So there's a motion on the table.
It's been seconded.
And it's been seconded. So roll call, please.
Lade.
Yes.
Montzel. Yes.
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 Seven.
Yes. Thank you. All right. The next item is approval of intergovernmental cooperation agreement. Can we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Seven.
Yes. The next item is the Consent Agenda, which includes approval of agreement to furnish food service to District 65, approval of prevailing wage resolution, approval of minutes for May 21, 2018 closed session minutes, and May 21, 2018 regular minutes, approval of bills, personnel agenda, which includes appointments to staff, certified, support staff operations, and summer school. Is there a...
Mm-hmm.
Change in status, exemption, reorganization, and stipends, resignations, certified, safety and operations, retirement, support staff, release, support staff, other salary approvals, administrator exempt. Do we have an addendum?
We do, but do you want to...
And for the next...
You want to...
Item number seven, I'd like to pull that one out, and we'll do that one separately. But there is an addendum to the consent agenda, and that includes appointment to staff exempt, change in status of support staff, and stipends.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. All right. So then, the next item that we pulled out of the consent agenda is the extension of superintendent's employment contract. So we pulled this out.
So do you have a motion?
Yes. So could we have a motion, please?
Move approval of the resolution?
Yes. We'd like, we have a resolution that Mr. Lade is going to read for us.
Be it resolved by the Board of Education of Evanston Township High School, District 202, Cook County, Illinois, as follows. The Board hereby finds that the Superintendent, Dr. Eric Witherspoon, has met the goals of the current July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2020, performance-based superintendent's contract between Dr. Witherspoon and the Board, and that the Board is therefore authorized by law to extend the term of the contract. The Board hereby approves and authorizes the President and Secretary to sign an amendment to the contract, substantially in the form of the attached Exhibit A, extending the term of the contract through June 30, 2022, and approving new goals. This resolution shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption, adopted June 11, 2018, by a roll call vote as follows.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for reading that. Dr. Witherspoon, would you talk a little bit of...
Did you want the motion to second?
Oh, was the motion not second?
Second.
There you go.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded. Now we can have a discussion, correct?
Yeah. The one thing that I would just like to explain, and I know the Board is aware of this, that in my contract are strategic performance goals. My real charge is to develop strategies in order for the district and ultimately the Board to reach the district goals, the Board adopted district goals. But within that are my annual performance goals. And so, Board, you are very aware of those. This Exhibit A will include my superintendent performance goals for the coming school year, but then, as you know, over the course of the contract, each year, I update and bring the next set of strategic performance goals, because we don't try to make one set of goals last for four years. If it's working right, many and most of those goals are being met each year as we move forward. And so, it's a constantly accumulation of goals that the Board is aware that you have for me and that I'm reporting back on those goals.
Thank you. Are there other questions?
And so, just to clarify, for each year of the four years extension of the, well, it's two years, of the four years remaining on the contract, in each of those years, you will put forward a set of performance goals, and each of those are essentially additional strategies for achieving the district goals.
That's exactly right, Mr. Baum. And in fact, then, each year in my annual evaluation, I report to the Board on the progress of those goals, and the Board then, of course, evaluates me based on that. Thank you.
It's hard when we talk about goals, we think about what you've pulled out, which is important, and then to look at it over a series of time, over a series of time.
That's right.
But it still doesn't capture all that goes on in this building and in this school. So it's, you know, and I'm saying this for, you know, this big, huge audience watching. But because, you know, folks look for their passion, their, what's important to them. And there's a lot of important work that we do here, that may not be named or mentioned or captured. You know, Pat mentioned professional development and how that's important. You know, it's a very good example of something that we know is important, and we will continue to provide professional development opportunities for staff as needed. But it may or may not, it may or may not be mentioned in the goals.
But the umbrella, of course, are your district goals.
Right.
And as a superintendent, I have a responsibility for all those goals and for directing and implementing strategies, so that we are reporting on those district goals on a regular basis. Correct.
Okay. Are there other questions or comments? If not, can we have a roll call, please?
Parsons?
Yes.
Ball? Yes.
Lade?
Yes.
Metz.
Yes.
Savage Williams.
Yes, thank you. The motion passed.
And thank you, Board. Thank you very much. And the work continues.
The work continues. Go forth. Okay, so we're at old and new business. Is there any old or new business? So we are at the closing. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Can I poll the Board?
Oh, would you like, okay.
I'd like that too.
All right.
You know, I almost never say anything during polling.
You don't, right?
I don't, you know, I just, I don't. But I got to tell you, you know, it's like, this work we do is important, and it's good work to do. But there's very little of it that I would characterize as fun, right? This is work, and it's good. But graduation, going to that commencement this year, that is just pure fun. Standing up there, handing out those diplomas, watching those kids come across the stage, right? Wanted to be all cool and adult and all that. And all that breaking down and smiles this big all morning long. It's just, it made my weekend.
Yeah.
And I just so appreciated this class in particular. I don't know whether it was maybe my point of view, but they just seemed even happier than most classes. And it was just a really wonderful morning. And congratulations to the class of 2018. And also, I want to make a quick shout out to the baseball team. Varsity made the final 16 before they were eliminated, which was really quite an accomplishment, the final 16 of the big schools. And they had a great season. They were the last team playing, last man standing for ETHS in the spring athletic contest.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yes, Pat.
So I want to second everything Mark just said and congratulate the class of 2018 because they were amazing. And I'm very biased because my youngest child was a member of the class of 2018. And so I just, as a parent and as a board member, I want to say thank you to ETHS for launching my two amazing children with a background that I just don't think they could have gotten anywhere else. Both from their academic education, but perhaps even more importantly, their sense of self and sense of their place in the world and the conscience with which they go forward. And I have a 22-year-old wild kid, and I have a now almost 18-year-old wild kid. And I'm very biased, but they're amazing. And, but they are just among a group of amazing young people. And I think this class particularly exemplified that in so many different ways over these last four years. And like Mark, it was a privilege to stand on that stage and see all those kids, especially because I knew a lot of them from the time they were two or three. That was awesome. But even the kids I'd never met before, it was just an honor and a privilege. And it is, as a parent and a board member, it is an honor and a privilege to have this school prepare the kids of this community, including my own. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Wonderful, wonderful. Jude?
You sure? Okay, okay. I too want to congratulate the class of 2018. I think it's one of the benefits that we have as a board member. And I remember when I was running, people would often say, oh, it's a thankless job. I don't believe that in any kind of way. I think what we do, you know, we get that gratification every day. And every time we sit around here and make decisions. And then you just see, it's the highlight of the year to see these students graduate and walk across the stage and how happy they are and how emotional parents get. And it's also a testament to the staff that we have here at ETHS. So it is definitely something that I look forward to. I leave church early, just to, I had to. Yeah, get on that road to Hoffman Estates.
There we go.
But it is so important, it's that important. And it's so important for them to see us, right? And for us to be able to hand them their diplomas. So not only do we benefit, but I also, I believe that the students benefit by seeing us being so visible and actively engaged in their celebration of graduating. So congratulations, and yeah, next class to come, so good job.
Just quickly, I just want to, as I reflect on my first year, our first year, Pat, on the Board, there's been one ongoing question that I've been asked from the beginning. How is it being on the Board? And I just want to say publicly that I would not have it any other way. And I am so proud to be on this Board. I'm proud to be on this committee. And I'm proud to be a servant of the people of Evanston and our children. So thank you, my colleagues, the administration, the students, the parents. It's a great day to be a wild kid.
You're not leaving, you guys.
No.
So don't forget, we're back here in a couple of weeks. It's not like anybody's going anywhere. Right, I know.
I'm not going anywhere.
We're not doing a farewell, but, you know, I really, I have to say, I do find this work, I mean, it's definitely work, but it's gratifying because I feel like we are accomplishing, we're accomplishing things here that are, that's very important on behalf of our students and on behalf of our community. I think we're really connecting some important concepts with reality. So I'm proud of that. And it was, it was really just a beautiful graduation. It was a beautiful day. I didn't mind the drive, but of course, I didn't drive. So that was awesome, yes. So I appreciate, really, I appreciate everybody's comments. And congratulations to our two board members who had graduates. Congratulations.
And Dr. Beavis.
And Dr. Beavis, absolutely wonderful. All right, now, okay, can we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Thank you.